Hello and thank you for joining our virtual discussion about the Willoughby Eastlake Online Academy. We are pleased to offer this opportunity to both our students and our families. My name is Steve Thompson. I'm the superintendent and tonight I am joined by Robin Hopkins. She is the Director of the Online Academy. Again, thank you for sending your questions. We are very happy to be able to address as many of those questions as we can this evening and we have attempted to divide these questions into categories to help you follow along as you watch the Facebook. So the first set of questions we're going to take a look at is under what we're calling "Falling Under the Headline of Why Have a Deadline and Why Is the Deadline What It Is", which might appear to you all to be very early. So the first question is, "If we enroll online learning by the current deadline, can we switch back to in-person later? If we miss the online enrollment deadline, will there be opportunities again before the school year starts?" Seems like a very logical question. It seems like it should be fluid, but the reason it is not fluid is our staffing requirements are based on the number of students who enroll in the program and it is a very extensive process as teachers have the right to bid on those positions, bid out of those positions. So there are seniority issues, contractual obligations that require us to make the deadline well before because it takes over a month to process all of the openings, post them, have them filled, and make sure we meet all of our obligations and our contracts. "Why do you need to know if my child will be virtual May 24th? I would prefer to wait until the end of the summer to see what happens with COVID." Again, completely understand that, but we have to staff based on essentially what I just answered previously. And if we miss the deadline by accident and our child is currently virtual and we want to continue, how does that work? It doesn't work. So you really need to be paying attention to the deadline. The district will send out multiple warnings, multiple reminders over the next several days to help people try to remember, but it's really imperative that you make your decision by Sunday. On Sunday, you really need to wrap it up and make a choice and while I know it's difficult and every question is not at our fingertips right now, it is simply because it drives our staffing and we need to know that. "Can we extend enrollment dates as it's too early to decide and change and go back to normal school?" No, but the compromise that we have made is we are going to allow a semester change. So you are dedicating yourself for a semester and then you'll have an option to either join the virtual program at the semester break or move back to brick and mortar if you choose virtual. So that does afford some flexibility, but please understand for the district to make that decision and have that flexibility for your parents, which I understand why you want it, creates a lot of issues for us in a very short amount of time over Christmas break to make those changes to our staffing levels. Remember, it also affects people's employment. So there's an awful lot on the line here in terms of people's lives, contractual obligations that we have to meet. The next set of questions is just general operations is the category we put them in. Question was, "I do not like 100% in-school or 100% online. Can't there be a three-days and two-days online? That way they socialize and have learning tailored to how they learn best." This particular student got straight A's and B's in school and online and he has a very supportive system either way, but ideally would be great to do a combo. There is the opportunity for a student to be online in our high school, for example, and take classes at North or South High School, but to divide it up into a three- and a two-day schedule is not possible, but there is some flexibility in terms of what you could do here at the Online Academy and what you could do in one of our buildings. The caveat to that would be you as a parent or the students going to have to transport themselves if that requires you to go back to the home high school or the home middle school if you're transporting as a parent for that student to attend that class in-person. "Will there be any SOE teachers teaching at the Online Academy?" Well, again, we have a negotiated agreement for our teachers. Those bidding rights for positions and teacher assignments will be made according to the contract, so really can't answer that question if there would be a SOE teacher or not. "If a child is SOE and we decide a path for one school year, will the child lose their spot at SOE if we decide to go back to in-person the following year?" The answer, that is very likely that spot would be filled. Your student could be placed on a waiting list and if there was an opening, that's a possibility, but yes, in general, the answer to that question is yes. "What happens if my child is so ill they cannot attend classes?" My child is...Students who miss class for whatever reason are expected to make up their assignments upon return just like an in-person learning student does. Parents must report absences, follow the same attendance policies, and students should check Schoology for their assignments. Next question is, "Will my child earn a Willoughby Eastlake High School diploma?" And they will earn a Willoughby Eastlake High School diploma and it will be supported by the Higher Department of Education. Won't look any different than their diploma would from North or South High School. And what is the school calendar? It's posted on the website. The Online Academy school calendar exactly mirrors the school calendar for the district. "Can children in the Willoughby Eastlake District attend a school that isn't assigned to the address where they live as long as they still reside in the district?" And the answer is, it's possible. You can apply for an in-district transfer option for parents who wish to request a school other than their home school. The biggest obstacle for doing that for many families is you must provide your own transportation. "Will the virtual school cost the district extra money compared to having these students in class and what are the additional costs to taxpayers?" Well, there's many different ways to look at it and it really is predicated on one principle. If a student who opts for online and there is no online and they return to brick and mortar, there's no loss to the district. However, if a student chooses online, the district does not offer online. For every student who leaves the district, that's $6,020 that follows them. So it is financially, if 100 students leave because we don't have an Online Academy offering, that's over $600,000 that would leave. The district offers some taxpayer money that was allocated to our district, leaves our district. So when we do, as more students come into online and we move Willoughby Eastlake teachers over to fill those positions, we right-size back at the buildings so staffing levels remain neutral. "Will there be a permanent option going forward?" That is absolutely our goal is to make this a permanent option for our families provided that there's interest in the community. Next question is, "Will there be a minimum previous-year GPA for admittance and would that, what would that be if so?" And the answer is no, there would not be. "Will you offer meal pickups next year?" We know that we are still in the federal program where all lunches are free for all students, so we will distribute meals across the district as we have been doing this whole past year. Next question, "Since teachers have been vaccinated, can students not be masked anymore or at least be able to take them off once seated since they're, since this is, since exactly what we do in restaurants," I guess is the question. Obviously, this doesn't apply to virtual students since they're, will be at their own home. However, as a school district, we're not able to make that final determination until we have further guidance from the CDC. While the governor's order does say no masks after, I believe it's January or June 2nd, the CDC has said that they will provide guidance for schools. So at this point, we're going to wait until we see that guidance and then make a decision moving forward. "Do you supply transportation?" And I think the question is, do you supply transportation on the times when we would need to bring students in for mandatory testing? And we, at this point, we would, we will provide the transportation on those mandatory days. "Why was there a change in time of the school day?" We established the schedule to be more consistent for our families who may need to transport students at the end of the day for sports or other activities, especially if the students are in several different grade levels in one home. How, oh, this is the favorite, this is a good one. This had to be written by a student. "How will snow days and COVID shutdown work for brick-and-mortar students?" With the current system, all students are able to work from home. What will happen now? Well, let's take snow days first. So if we're moving into snow days next year and we have a snow day, the entire, by contractual agreement with our teachers, a snow day is a non-teaching day. So that, there will be no school in brick-and-mortar and there would be no school in virtual online academy. In terms of COVID surging and coming back, doesn't really, the Online Academy is obviously well-suited to respond to that as they're already at their homes, already have their Chromebooks and have the materials that they need. The transition would be for our brick-and-mortar students should that occur. "You mentioned splitting grades. For example, having one teacher teach both second and third grade. If my child is in the class, how would they get a full day's worth of grade-level instruction when another grade level is being taught as well?" That is not our primary objective to have split-level classes. There are ways to address it. A classroom teacher can have multiple reading groups or student groups working in their seats. Teachers can simply work with other grade levels, moving back and forth. So it can be done. It's been done, but it's not the ideal situation. The only way that we would split a class is if the student numbers demanded it. If your child, if you sign up and your child ends up in a split classroom, that would be an opportu, we would contact you and let you know that and give you another option to decide if this is what you want to do or you would prefer to return to brick-and-mortar. I've heard that there is talk of putting students in two grade levels in one class. That's what we just addressed. Same question, reworded. "What is the criteria to join?" The Online Academy is a public school, so it's just another option for parents in the district to choose. The brochure that we have put together and that will be going out includes some characteristics of students who are successful online for parents to consider. Not every student does well online, just like not every student does well in brick-and-mortar. So we're trying to give people options that best fit their students. "Will kindergarteners who did online in 2021 year be able to keep their same teacher for 21, 22?" The teachers in the Online Academy will not necessarily be the same teachers that taught virtually this past year. Again, our union contract stipulates how teachers move from one, from brick-and-mortar to online or online to brick-and-mortar. So that's probably unlikely. "If my child goes virtual, can she return in-person another year or virtual until graduation?" They could stay virtual through, all the way to graduation. They would have an option at the semester break winter to make a choice to go back or certainly at the end of the year, make the option to go back and forth. "If you sign up for virtual, do you need to stay until you graduate?" No, we just answered that. So good question. At this point, thankfully, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hopkins and she's going to take a look at what the day will look like to try to give you a visual of that.
All right. So the first question is, "Will lunch be at a standard time or different times?" Lunchtimes will be a part of the daily schedule and should remain the same. However, it will be different for different students at different grade levels. "How much time is my student going to spend online?" We are delivering instruction online and this is our format. So parents who will need to understand that students will spend a significant amount of time online and on their computers. This time with their teachers and peers during live instruction, they will have some independent assignments, they will need to, that will need to be completed online. We cannot quantify exactly how much time that will be because there are so many different factors and it also depends on the teacher, the assignments, for example. "Will my child have, have to have their camera on all the time?" During live instruction and breakout sessions, group students are expected to have their cameras on. Students are expected to follow the classroom policies for learning, which includes when they will and will not have to have their cameras and microphones on. "Will the kids be independent learning or grouped in a classroom setting that involves bell schedules?" The students will participate in whole group and small group instruction and independent work time. All students will have a schedule to follow. We probably will not be ringing bells. "Will the kids have an opportunity in online school for small group or one-on-one instruction and interactions with their peers?" And again, yes, we will offer whole group, small group, and individual opportunities for instruction as needed. "Are middle school and high school in-person teachers also teaching the virtual students at the same time or will it be different than the 2021 school year and there will be designated virtual teachers for the virtual students? Hopefully, it will be separate next year so it does not take away from the education happening in the classroom." The Online Academy teachers are dedicated teachers to the online school and students. The teachers will teach the online students only. Our next section of questions are dealing with communications with teacher and/or the school. "What is the process or chain for, excuse me, sorry about that. What is the process or chain for concerns with a teacher or therapist?" As with any concerns, a parent should start with the teacher first and then contact the Online Academy Director if the problem hasn't been resolved. "How will the teachers communicate with parents if their child is struggling or failing?" Teachers are required to communicate with parents regularly regarding student progress. Please contact the principal if you have concerns about grading or student progress, whether it is at the Online Academy or at any of our schools. We always want you to reach out if you have concerns.
Now, Robin, they'll also still be on Power School, will these students not?
Absolutely. Power School and Schoology, which they can use to clearly look at their students' progress, classroom assignments that have been turned in, and keep updated on the grades.
Thank you.
Our next, our next set of questions are about technology. "Does a student have to use the provided district Chromebook or can they continue to use a personal device?" Students may use a personal device. However, when using a district Chromebook, the district pushes out updates for software and testing software that will be important for students to access all of their needed programs. If you are using a personal device, we are not able to provide the technical support. However, if there is testing software that you cannot put on a personal device or computer, we can loan one to a student for access to curriculum and testing. "What happens if my Chromebook starts, stops working?" Well, we contact the help line for repairs or replacements as needed, just as we did this year. "What happens if we are having trouble logging in and gaining access to classes or programs?" You should first start with the teacher. Contact the teacher for assistance. In many cases, they should be able to help you. If they cannot assist you, there is a dedicated support line that you can use to get help. "Would there be training on the use of Chromebooks and software programs?" Yes, we will provide some training and resources for parents and students on using the technology and the educational programs. "What technology does my child need for the Online Academy?" The district will provide each student with a district Chromebook. It is recommended that families have access to a printer and they must have internet and that Chromebook will have everything that you need.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopkins. And moving forward, or moving back and forth from virtual to in-person or vice versa. So I think we've hit that to some degree, but there are still some questions, some additional questions. My child, if my child is virtual all year, 2021, and we want to return to in-person for 21, 22, do we need to submit anything? All virtual students this year will be reassigned to their home schools for in-person learning without you doing anything. Parents only need to fill out the registration form if they want their child to attend the Online Academy. So again, if you want your student to return in brick-and-mortar, you're good. You don't need to do anything. However, if you want to stay in the Online Academy, you need to fill out that application. Again, that deadline is this Sunday that you need to have that application turned in. "My son is doing better online than he ever has in-person, but I hate to have him miss his first high school experience." If a person does not go as, or if it does not go as well socially and/or academically online, can he switch after a quarter or a semester? The answer is, he would be able to switch after the semester, but again, remember the difficulty and stress that that puts on allowing the flexibility moving back and forth. I would also like to point out that, I certainly understand that sentiment. Am I going to be excluded, isolated as an online student? Please remember, you're eligible for all the same activities that, at your home school as you would be if you were attending in brick-and-mortar. So they could play sports, be, you know, in a variety of clubs, et cetera, et cetera, if they chose to. "Will there be an option to switch to in-person attendance after, is that after..."
Two-year-olds, that's what.
Oh, for two-year-olds to 12-year-olds, I'm sorry, when they get vaccinated, most likely switching for the second half of the academic year. And the answer to that is yes. Really, that decision, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated rests with the parent to make that decision. And finally, will students be able to switch from virtual to brick-and-mortar throughout the school year like they could this year? And the answer to that is no. Why were the six through 12 students able to move back and forth? That question might be perplexing to some of you out there that had elementary students and you're saying, "Wait, that didn't happen in elementary school." No, it didn't because elementary students this past year were assigned to dedicated teachers only, 100%. Six through 12 were streaming in a live classroom. So that allowed us to allow flexibility in movement, six through 12, but unable to in the elementary level. The advantages of having your own dedicated teacher, I think, speak for themselves and so all the teachers will be dedicated. The downside of that is it doesn't allow that flexibility of movement.
Our next set of questions, actually one question, is about student fees. Do I have to pay fees to attend this school? Yes. Students will be assessed fees for certain materials based on grade level and the courses that they are assigned to, just like in-person learners. They, these are the same fees that any in-person student will pay.
I think one of my favorite, and I think probably one of the favorite topics of parents, I'm joking actually, asynchronous days. So this, this topic is addressing that, those questions. Will there be asynchronous days for students? There will not be asynchronous days for students like there was this past year. The virtual students will follow the same schedule as our in-person learners. Next question is, "During COVID, if a teacher was ill, students did not have class. Will substitutes cover on classes or will students have asynchronous days?" No, if a teacher is absent, we'll go through the same process we would in brick-and-mortar, seek that substitute, assign a substitute to that class, just as, just as we have traditionally. Now, I can tell you that substitutes are very difficult to find and that was exacerbated by the fact that we were in COVID and many of our traditional subs, which often are retired teachers, were less comfortable coming into the brick-and-mortar. So hopefully, we see that subside, our substitute numbers increase, but based on number of students, one thing that we will take a hard look at this summer is assigning a full-time substitute to the virtual school so that they can be very familiarized with all the grade levels and the technology. So we'll work through that, but the, the goal is to not disrupt the learning of an online student due to a staff illness, just like it is in a brick-and-mortar. "During COVID, if a teacher was ill..." Didn't we just read that one? Thank you. I'm sorry. "Will students have asynchronous Wednesdays again or anything similar?" And the answer to that is no. "Will in-person instruction be affected?" Affected by teacher supporting online in-person? Boy, I'm not sure I understand this question. Mrs. Beal, can you read that question to me?
I think they're, they mean if the students are doing both. So will in-person instruction be affected where teachers are required to do in-person and virtual? I think that's what they're asking.
Requiring asynchronous days to catch up. So basically, no.
You answer this question. I don't understand the question.
Again, the Online Academy teachers are dedicated teachers to the online program and so there is no need for those teachers to have an asynchronous day or for in-person teachers to have an asynchronous day. So there will be no asynchronous days and students, if they're online or in-person, will have classes five days a week.
Thank you. Glad you could answer that question. And you're on for the next section, Mrs. Hopkins.
Here we go. These questions are about provisions for special education students and gifted students as well as differentiation. "Will differentiated instruction be provided for gifted students?" The answer is that our teachers will meet the needs of our students by providing intervention and enrichment as appropriate based on their students' needs. "Is this online school suitable for those identified as gifted? Will it accommodate those needs of those children?" And yes, again, we will meet the needs of all students that we have in our online school. "Please explain how my ninth grader who has an IEP be taught? Will you have an intervention specialist? And if we choose the online option, can our children participate in school, in a school club or team?" Your child will have a special education teacher as described in their IEP and the high school team will meet with parents to prescribe an individual plan for that student based on his or her service, services so that we can meet their needs. "Will group therapy be a virtual, will, I'm sorry, will group therapy also be virtual for IEP students? Will therapists change? Will there be any person, personal opportunities for students who have social goals for their IEPs?" Again, what we will do is before the beginning of the school year, the IEP team will meet with parents to determine what the appropriate services are for those students who are online.
You know, and I think it's also important to remind parents that their home school options are still available to them as well, whether that's a club or an activity, a sport. So those are still all there and available for kids to meet. Just an opportunity to socialize that they might feel like they're not getting from the Online Academy.
Absolutely. And basically, there's the same questions. My student on an IEP that would normally be going to the middle school, to North for August 9th, you know, how will this work? And again, we will meet with parents to go over the IEP and determine what services can be met on the, with the online school. Our next questions have to do with curriculum. Can my student take AP or CCP courses? Yes. Advanced coursework is available to qualify. Yes, advanced coursework is available to qualified online students depending on their schedule and the class availability. Will students post, will teachers post videos for my students to watch instead of live instruction? All teachers will be providing live instruction every day. Now, videos can be used as a part of instruction to supplement live learning and reinforce concepts taught, but videos will not be used instead of direct teacher instruction. Can my child attend the online academy and the Excel Tech program? Students will have the opportunity to apply for and attend Excel Tech programs if they are accepted and be a part of the online academy. Will NCI students have the proper time to get home for classes? Are they eligible to do the online? What we would need to do is truly look at their schedule and try to figure out how we can make that work and that will be determined on an individual basis per student. What supplies and instructional materials does my student need and how will I get them? We will supply a supply list and prior to the start of the school year. And we will also have pickup days that will be set up for parents to come and pick up different instructional materials and supplies that we provide from the district. Nordonia School District has been using EdMenon for their virtual learning implementation. This does not involve following a bell schedule, rather, specific teachers that interact with virtual students only at scheduled times. I have a student in my home that uses this platform with success. He goes to Nordonia. Has there been any research into other programs being used by other districts? Also, will the kids be independent learning or grouped in classroom settings that involve bell schedules, et cetera? We use the EdMenon courseware in our district. The curriculum is used by teachers in classrooms as an instructional tool and it is used by students and we use it for credit recovery. For our online academy, most of our feedback we receive from teachers and parents is that live instruction provides students with the most opportunity for them to succeed. Can my son stay online and get help with homework? If any tutoring options are available, we will definitely share that information with parents. But we should also reach out to our teachers because our teachers are also the first line for help.
Just to give you a visual, all of our teachers will be housed here on the second floor of this facility with space that is going to be provided for teachers to work with students as they need to or meet with parents. Mrs. Hopkins, the opportunity to meet with parents or work with the staff. So those spaces are available and those opportunities will exist.
Do my students have to take the state tests? Yes, students are expected to participate in all local district and state required assessments. Students are required to participate in the Ohio State Test and the Ohio State Tests are part of the graduation requirements.
And finally, extracurricular activities and socializations, which I think we have touched upon, but we have a few specific questions. The first question is if we choose the online option for our children, can they participate in these clubs and teams? And the answer, of course, is yes. They can participate in these clubs and teams at their homes. And we also hope to provide some support groups and some clubs and some activities with, within the online academy as well. So I think there'll be a breadth and depth of options for students to choose. And this one is a suggestion, very passionate about this one. I love it. If the kids sign up for online, can they have a dedicated classroom? So they do their online, they will also have the option to come in a few times a week by signup sheet. This would help kids who are immune compromised attend when they aren't sick and also provide an oper, an option for kids with anxieties that can be triggered anytime. So they would be on track to mitigate towards going in-person at some point. It would be nice if online that they had a classroom, so if they wanted to attend in-person, they can. And then she talks about her son's particular issues and we certainly understand how difficult some of these challenges can be. And there are so many different students and that's really the impetus behind all of this is to provide as many educational options as we can for our parents. So what, what the district is offering as an online or in-person option is to meet the different needs of our families. The online academy is dedicated to online instruct, school options, instructional options and does not include in-person classes except for required testing. Now, I will say the caveat to that is we hope to be able to have opportunities for our students to be able to come in and see their teachers or make some time with their teachers. But to say that we're going to have a classroom, that's not the format that we're looking at. And at this point, that is not something that's been, been planned or we intend to do moving forward. Will teachers for upper class be from South High School and how does that work with extracurricular activities? Teachers will be assigned based on their certification requirements. So obviously, there could be some South teachers in that mix and also have to be in compliance with the teachers' union negotiated agreement for teacher assignments. Teachers may be assigned from any of our school buildings to the online academy. Some will choose. Teachers will be assigned to extracurricular activities following the same supplemental assignment processes we currently follow based on the teacher's negotiated agreement. So if it's a, if it's looking at it from the teacher perspective, a teacher could teach online here and still coach at, anywhere, south or anywhere else or, or be the, or be in drama or any other supplemental position. From a student's perspective, obviously, they can be a student here and participate in activities at their homeschool. What about in-person meetups for online kids interested in connecting with peers for socialization? There may be clubs developed, we're looking at how we can do that. And again, of course, you still have your clubs and activities at your homeschool, but we're planning to investigate this and establish some of these things based on student interest. Obviously, we want the, the online academy to be successful. We want to meet the needs of our students to the greatest extent that we possibly can and that's why we're offering this option. We know that it is not for every student, but brick and mortar is not for every student either. So some kids just excel better in an online, on an online situation and some students can even mix the two if they're able to provide their own transportation. So with that being said, we'd like to thank you for joining us this evening. We hope that you found this helpful. And as a reminder, if you would like to enroll your child in the online academy, you are able to do so until Monday morning, May 24th at 8:00 a.m. I really encourage you to please hit that deadline coming on Tuesday or Wednesday or Friday. And we will do the very best we can to communicate this through every channel as we have been doing and will continue to do that. If you could help spread the word on your own Facebook pages, if you could post and spread that word. If there is interest in the online academy, it needs to be done. So I would say safely, let's get it done by Sunday night and not take the risk that something might go wrong. You can find the link on the district website. The district website is www.weschools.org. And again, thank you for submitting your questions tonight and I hope that you feel at ease to make the decision that is best for your student and your family. Thank you.
Thank you.